Okay, thank you. Jerry, you have a question?
Actually, I just wanted to know if staff or Matt have any comments on this project.
Well, I have a question for Jamie and then my comments. I think we're going to be in a closed session, so I'd hold off on those until closed session.
Okay.
Questions for Jamie. Jamie, you may have provided this in your materials, but I didn't hear you describe... I didn't hear you...
What were the costs?
No, how much money are you asking for?
Oh, this is 68.
68,000? And how did you arrive at that 68,000?
It's basically what I had left that was unsecured to get back down to zero plus the extra cost that would cost to do the parking lot, to expand the parking lot, to build...
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Slow down. Extra costs that were unsecured, you mean funds that you borrowed from your lender?
Due to this.
That are...so you have an unsecured loan with your lender? So there's that piece of it?
Correct.
Dave, is that right?
Excuse me, Dave. You'll need to come to microphone, please. It doesn't pick up otherwise.
We have some, I guess, family-held collateral that we're holding temporarily that we will let go of once something gets worked out.
But part of this TIF funding is intended to take the place of an unsecured...
It's my understanding, in my letter that I wrote, really what has occurred because of these unforeseen circumstances, much higher cost to get the land buildable, the delays associated with the DNR delineation issues, the engineering costs, the building in the winter, I mean, all of the things that accrued that caused this to be a much more expensive project got paid, but they got paid at the expense of working capital from the business, and they got paid at the expense of additional loan that now is somewhat of a hurdle when you want to do another loan for a banquet facility. Because, you know, what do we secure this by? We're already in a negative position, so how are you going to lend more? You know, you like to get back to even if you can.
So the idea is that with this additional TIF funding, you'd be at a point where the...
Here's the way I looked at it when I wrote the letter. I was thinking that had all of this information been available to the board two years ago, they may have made a slightly different money award. And now, in assuming that that would have been the case, then now we wouldn't be here because there would have been more money available, and we've been able to cover those costs, and we'd be on our way to building the banquet hall. Instead, we're at a different spot because we shorted the project to start with, and now we want to turn the page, get current, and now do this project.
What I'm trying to figure out is whether this TIF funding that's being requested at this time is intended to take the place of existing debt unsecured? Or is it intended to fund banquet facility which it...you know what I'm asking?
Well, it's sort of both. I mean, it's like a chicken and an egg. You can't start another project until you get other...I mean, I borrowed $500 from you, are you going to loan me $1,000? You know, no, you're going to wait until I pay that back. Yes, I absolutely...we can say this money will go all into the banquet facility, but then, Dave, if I had that to put down as extra collateral, then he would fund me the banquet facility. If I don't have it, then I can't get it to pay...you know what I mean?
We're looking at an SBA 7A loan to do the banquet facility in third position, and they'll fund the banquet facility, but they're not going to fund existing debt. Okay? So really, one of the reasons that we need to get that debt out of the way is so that we can actually get approval for the banquet facility.
The idea is you get the grant, you pay off some of that existing debt...
Essentially, we want to try and be backward-looking a little bit if we can, because the 50 or whatever, 68,000 that we'd get now if Jamie got that, is not going to actually...now these dollars go into a banquet facility, but what it will do is put the business in a position where it can get the dollars to build the banquet facility. And we can certainly make it contingent upon actually getting approval, you know, and funding. You know, you're not going to give him money unless he builds the project. I can't give you a commitment that we can build it until I know that we can pay the loans off. You see, it's like a chicken and an egg situation.
Next question. If the board doesn't provide the additional TIF funding, the agreement requires you to complete the facility by the end of the year, and if you don't, then you have to repay $42,000 to the village.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So tell us what hap...so how does that factor into this from your perspective? So where would you be if the village board says no?
If the village board says no, the first thing I would do is probably ask the village board for an extension to figure out what I could do, because I don't know what I could do. Because when we did that, we were supposed to have been already built six, eight months ahead of time. So we got pushed back because of nothing to do with us. I mean, that was all delays that had nothing to do with our project.
And we granted one extension already.
Right, and it's like, well, no, we granted...did we grant...okay, we granted that one right off the bat, because originally I started this in 2012.
Yeah, we gave you an additional year to build a banquet hall.
Correct. Well, yes, we did, because we did what it was...oh...
The original deadline was...
Let's see here. That's why I stuck it in the...
No, we did...I wasn't...no, the first extension was because I wasn't going to have the business open in December.
Is that what it was?
That's what it was. So the banquet hall has never been extended.
That's right.
You gave me an extension on the business because I couldn't actually be open, because I didn't even get to start building the building on time.
You're...Jamie, you're right.
Okay, so you're still...
You opened February.
I'm still on the same timeline. The extension was given for the actual restaurant, because we were delayed so many months in even getting the restaurant open. We weren't even going to hit our original timeline for even that part of the TIF.
The only thing I know is on my system, the letter of credit expires in January of '16.
Yep, that's correct.
So I've never gotten an extension on that.
And I've only done one letter.
Right. Okay, so back to what happens if the board says no? You'd ask for an extension.
Yep, and then, I mean, I'd keep doing what I am doing and seeing how I could do it and see if I could make it work. But the first time I did this, I went $200,000 negative. I had gave myself a 20-pound weight loss in sleep. Basically, almost ruined my marriage and my relationship with my kids, so I'm not going to do that again. So I mean, I would try to figure out a way to make it work without going into that deep of a hole. Can't do that again. That was poor. I was a poor manager, a poor leader, because of just the amount of stress in trying to make this project work the first time, being under that type of financial constraint. When I was like, I have no idea how tomorrow we're going to pay off what we're building today. So I don't know, I would keep coming back and ask what I could do next.
How much time would you ask for?
I have no...well, I mean, I would keep pushing back, but I mean, at some point after this three years, I'd have to redo the entire banquet facility to the state, because my original plans are no longer valid. So now I'd have to get a new plan, I'd have to have that re-approved. I mean, the longer this drags on, I feel like it's the less inclined I'm going to be to keep pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing. I don't know. I mean, you can only squeeze so much out of a guy.
So what happens if you have to refund the $42,000 to the village?
Well, I would hope that the village would look at what I've actually done for that TID, and I've already almost paid back. I mean, that TID was negative. When I bought that land, the village was losing $5,000 a year on it. I'm now creating a $12,668 surplus, so basically I'm making $17,000 a year for the village. If we delay it another year, the village has basically gotten everything they gave me back already. It's a TIF loan, they've almost gotten all their money back. I haven't cost anybody anything, and I've created, I think, something this village has really come to like. I mean, people like my...I mean, today, we are doing a donation. Mary Gu, the swimmer, I mean, I'm donating 10% of everything I sell today to cancer research, because she's like, came up to me and said, "I have metastatic cancer, and I'm swimming across every lake in Madison. Will you donate?" "Yes, I will." I mean, I've donated almost $10,000 to youth sports. I'd really hope the village would be like, "You know what? We have gotten our money's worth." I mean, I employ 85 people. I don't feel like...I don't feel like there's anything the village could look at this and go, "I don't feel like we've gotten our money's worth." I feel like they have.
So how do you feel about the banquet facility? I mean, if you had a choice between no banquet facility and working something out with the village with respect to the repayment of the 42,000?
Situation, can I have a retirement? Can we have, you know, all of these different things? I think it's valuable. I mean, my kids are at that age. I mean, we do it. We end up in somebody's house with 80 people, and it's a mess. But yeah, I would love to do it. But I mean, I'm also to the point where I basically could have sent you guys Christmas cards three years ago, because I was here so much. I mean, it's like I knew everybody on the village board, I was in here every two weeks. I don't want to do that again. I feel like I'd love to get it...I would love to get it up and running, I would love to get this as part of our community. I like it so that the hotel decides it's a great idea, that then I can convince Matt to build the pinnacle building next to my lot, because we can share the parking, and that, you know, Adam builds his giant whatever thing he wants to build that he wanted to build before, but I can't remember what it is now. I mean, I don't know, he wanted to build some type of apartment complex. But I mean, all of this stuff is all going in that area, and I think that we are the impetus for that. I think we really are pushing for that. So I would. I would build it. If the village is like, "Yeah, I'm ready to go."
Last question. So if the village, you and the village reached an agreement on...that allows you to move forward with the banquet facility, can you still meet the December 31, 2015 deadline?
If they give me my TIF grant, because I believe the original thing is I have to be starting on it, and I would be starting on it before then.
Substantially complete.
Does that mean it has a building and it's up? Because if it's a building and it's up, that would be substantially complete. I don't know if I could reach occupancy by then.
That's defined as completion of construction such that the building may be used for its intended purpose, including the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Hi, Dan.
It'll be done.
It'll be done. Okay. That's Dan, Supreme Structures.
Did you say done or tight?
He said tight.
Tight.
We'll be tight. We'll be there.
I'll tie it, Dan. I'm sorry, you'll have to come to the microphone or it doesn't carry.
Dan Birler, Supreme Structures, Jamie Spiller. Today is June realistic...
What do you mean?
So... If he has enough...
I need more people.
Enough more...enough people.
I can do that.
You don't need to have...
I'm not worried about that.
You just needed occupancy.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, then we could...
Yeah. I mean, for Jamie, we'll do it. You know, I...this is a guy, and I apologize, but this is a guy...I've worked, been in construction 23 years, and I've seen people say, "I'm done," and I walk, and this guy just keeps coming back and back and back. And I thought when the DNR stepped in, it was a huge delay. And we...I contacted everyone and anyone of who I knew to make things happen at the DNR, and when the guy finally came out on site and said, "What am I even out here for? There's no wetland here. This is bogus." I have a permit. Within 24 hours thereafter, we waited minimum three or four months for that to happen.
Yeah, I actually drove... I drove to the offices and I walked plans from the DNR office, because they said that they didn't have them, so I drove there and actually took the packet to the two people and said, "Now you do. Please, please give me my permits."
So sum it all up, I do feel very bad for Mr. Bush due to the fact he didn't counter many delays. It pushed him into winter, it pushed him into winter, heat, tarp, snow plowing, DNR delay. It cost him a chunk of money, absolutely a debt, controls that were outside his realm. The other thing, and I feel I shouldn't say this, but I've been working at a lot of different municipalities, and I've never had a TIF earmarked that you had to build something in order to get the money. And the reason I say that is I look at the BUT4 issue, and TIF in my mind is if you qualify for the BUT4, are the soils unsuitable, are you in a blighted area? If you build this, what's our return? And I think with or without the banquet facility, the project works, and I think Jamie demonstrates that. So personally, I think he's sitting here saying, "I'm growing, I'm giving back to the community, I want to go to the next step, my hands are tied, I gotta...I have to build this banquet facility. If I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do, because I have a deadline I got to meet." And correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's kind of where I sum it up. So if the village says, "We'll give them the money, it has to be done by December 31st, we'll figure it out, we'll have them occupied by December 31st."
Thank you. That's what I want to know.
Yes.
I want to make sure it wasn't going to run over into March or whatever, so it sounds like you'll be closer.
Question probably for Dave.
Hold my chair back.
Assuming the board is willing to provide additional funding, can you wait until the banquet facility is completed to take receipt of that funding? Is a commitment to provide the funding upon completion adequate?
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
I can pull over, man.
I think...well, it's a credit decision. I don't know if I want to make that here right this second, but I would believe that we would consider it, and I think it's very reasonable that we could. I don't want to issue a credit commitment at the table without that. Yeah, I hear what you're...so in other words, rather than having the money upfront, it would become a...
Well, we already paid for...one way of looking at this is we already paid for the banquet facility with the original TIF grant. It's not been completed yet, so the question is, if the board makes a commitment to provide additional funding, could we structure...
We'll figure out a way to make that work, I think, from what I'm hearing from this guy over here. What am I also thinking here? I guess what I...I wanted to just kind of piggyback on what he had to say here, because I mean, I understand that this is a restaurant bar volleyball, it's not a manufacturing company, it's not a standard TIF-able-type enterprise, and that I think causes some concern. But if you're looking at a district that needs to create increment and a village that wants to create jobs, we've done that. I do think we have a qualifying entity that certainly supports the award they've gotten already. So having said that, you're asking me, "Could I wait?" It is a credit decision, I need to take that obviously to my people. I think it's reasonable that if you've made a commitment that you're going to fund upon X, I'll make the loan and expect X.
I'm going to piggyback on that, sorry. Typically, when I build construction projects, we do construction draws. So if the total cost is $300,000 due to the banquet facility, David would most likely fund on a monthly draw process of that. So September, October, November, December, I'm always lagging a month anyways, so if you think about it, that last 60 or 70 or $100,000, I would not even be invoicing Mr. Bush until after the first of the year. So if that answers a question.
Well, the...I think what Matt's getting at is that if you have it built, we actually don't get any increment until a year later, so...
Really, two issues. One, making sure it's done, and then we've got a kind of a timing question with respect to when we start pooping TIF dollars.
If you look at the chart I'm showing, or we're showing, that actually the full value hits in 2017, because there's usually a year lag, and so that'd be a decision for the board, how to cover that initial year.
Those are my questions.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Any questions, Jerry?
Yes, I just want to touch on some just final information, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. Jamie, how many employees do you have? You had a range of 65 to 85?
Oh, winter, we have about 65, and we have volleyball running around about 85.
85, okay.
Because of refs, and I mean, they're just three wing, you know, you add in all the extra people.
Okay. So those are jobs that wouldn't normally be in the community, except for your facility. So we're talking a total TIF assistance in the amount of 135, 860. You're looking for an additional 68,000, which is part of that.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, it's part of that, and we're looking, I mean, the taxpayers will be whole by 2021.
And I am, I don't know who knows, I said, "Will you talk to Matt?" Can you just talk to Matt?
No.
I'm pushing very hard. Matt Prescott is a friend of mine. He's looking at building the back half of that thing in September, meaning this same property that originally was valued at 300,000. By the time if he finishes the project that he's finishing, which is the Pinnacle Clinic, it'll be over four-plus million dollars. You'll actually be whole on my property in less than two and a half years.
So this will just be the beginning of bigger projects? Okay.
Our timeline for that, Jerry, by the way, is next May for that property that Jamie's talking about.
Very good, very good. And so it'll be the only banquet hall in town?
I'm sorry, Bergamon has one.
Oh, that's true.
Which is much more family-oriented. I mean, you'll be able to bring...I mean, the cost will be definitely different...
It won't be as expensive.
Yeah, I don't know what you mean, but the cost will be much more reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. And that banquet hall be capable of handling a 120-person, 120-person party?
Up two.
Up two. Okay.
That'd be our max, I guess.
All right, thanks.
Anything else from the trust case? Staff?
Nope.
Okay. I think we have the information we need. Judy has her hand up. If you'd come to a microphone, please.
If I can just mention one thing, the thing I like about the banquet hall, he can close it down, the bar down, and it rolls down, so when you have a kids' function, there's no alcohol in that section. And I think that's really something that a lot of the community is looking for, that they don't want alcohol in some of the parts, so he can just, it's like a roll...
It's a roll. It's actually my current office.
Yeah, good for you.
And actually, it's already been reformed, it's already set to go. I mean, the way that we just...I mean, if you've seen the...you know, there's that hallway that goes to nowhere. I mean, it was...this banquet facility was thought of, I mean, we obviously had everything going, but yes, like, the entire thing can be either completely dry or not. It's really simple, it's just a roll top. It'll go.
So that's really nice.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Thanks for letting us know that.
I mean, I'm getting calls right now for the Welcome Center. I got 30 to 40 people that want to rent that, and I can...we can get, what, 10 in there? So once they heard that that was available, they're calling me and saying, "We want to rent it." Well, it fits 10, so, I mean, this is really nice. And also a divide, so he can have more than just one group in there, too. So that's something nice.
So you get a lot of 10-person banquets in there, is that what you're saying?
I must be. I haven't gotten one yet.
Okay. Anything else, Dan or Jamie or Dave?
Unless you...
I think we've done our questions, Mike.
So you want to go into closed session?
Yeah, I'm going to read that as soon as we get ready.
Do you want Jamie to stay and...
Yeah, you're certainly welcome to.
Okay.
I cannot predict how long it'll be.
Or if you want, Mike, you can communicate the board's direction.
Yeah, me too.
Actually, you know what? I would like to go back.
That's fine, go ahead. I'll drop you.
That's not a problem.
She's doing her thing there, so I like to go back.
You don't need to stay here.
Nope.
And we'll all come back.
No, 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 no. I'll be in contact with you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Dan, thanks, Dave.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, so we're at item four.
See you, Dan.
The village's board may adjourn in a closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E to discuss the possible use of tax increment financing to hold a banquet hall headquarters restaurant in TIF 4, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G to convert legal counsel regarding a strategy to be adopted in litigation, possible request for restitution in state of Wisconsin versus Douglas Pettit. We need a motion, please.
Some of...
Exactly.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Steaton?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go to closed session, we'll cross the hall, we'll come back here when we're done.
Welcome back everyone, we just finished a closed session. We're now back in open session. The closed session, one item was talking about Jimmy Bush's TIF request for the banquet halls part of his headquarters restaurant and staff will communicate with him tomorrow with regard to that as far as where the board is. So that's our decision right now on that. Which brings us to item six, the Scotts and Villages Planner, Mike Slavney, welcome Mike regarding civic campus plan and the board may provide direction concerning the process. So, Mr. Slavney, you are on.
I've realized we were running a little bit later than anticipated, so I'll forego the PowerPoint presentation and I have it for you at your desk in paper form. We have an architectural firm onboard, Epstein Hewin, among other things, they did the Goodman Center on the east side of Madison, which is a multi-use facility that's earned rave reviews and Brian Munson in our firm in particular has worked with them extensively and they're able to get on with the space needs analysis rapidly here and one of our criteria was getting that done soon and it's one of those projects where the budget isn't likely to be very big and it's hard to get an early, fast, out-of-the-block start on something like that, but they've committed to doing that. So what I wanted to do today is give you our evolving thoughts on the outline for this project. We believe we have a process that would be done by the end of the year with recommendations on what to do and where to do it and how to get it done in the most logical sequence. So I'll take you through it real quickly. The slide, I'll go by page numbers. At the bottom of page one, the first step in the process would be to identify the highest priority projects and confirm that both with the village board and with the general public. My rather vague understanding is that the library and the senior center are high priority for you here, but we also need to be aware of longer-term objectives to look at the needs for the village hall and the chamber, the youth center, potentially a food pantry, public parking, and finishing the pedestrian bike network through the downtown. And just briefly, historically for that pedestrian bike network, we've been focusing on the east-west link from the westside parks through the downtown under the railroad viaduct at the creek and coming through the hitching post and on to the eastside parks and the high school, but with the new county park opening at the
Welcome back, everyone. We just finished a closed session. We're now back in open session. The closed session, one item was talking about Jimmy Bush's TIF request for the banquet halls part of his headquarters restaurant and staff will communicate with him tomorrow with regard to that as far as where the board is. So that's our decision right now on that. Which brings us to item six, the Scott Village Planner, Mike Slavney. Welcome, Mike, regarding civic campus plan and the board may provide direction concerning the process. So, Mr. Slavney, you are on.
I've realized we were running a little bit later than anticipated, so I'll forego the PowerPoint presentation and I have it for you at your desk in paper form. We have an architectural firm onboard, Epstein Hewin. Among other things, they did the Goodman Center on the east side of Madison, which is a multi-use facility that's earned rave reviews. And Brian Munson in our firm in particular has worked with them extensively and they're able to get on with the space needs analysis rapidly here. And one of our criteria was getting that done soon. And it's one of those projects where the budget isn't likely to be very big and it's hard to get an early, fast, out-of-the-block start on something like that, but they've committed to doing that. So what I wanted to do today is give you our evolving thoughts on the outline for this project. We believe we have a process that would be done by the end of the year with recommendations on what to do and where to do it and how to get it done in the most logical sequence. So I'll take you through it real quickly. The slide, I'll go by page numbers. At the bottom of page one, the first step in the process would be to identify the highest priority projects and confirm that both with the village board and with the general public. My rather vague understanding is that the library and the senior center are high priority for you here, but we also need to be aware of longer-term objectives to look at the needs for the village hall and the chamber, the youth center, potentially a food pantry, public parking, and finishing the pedestrian bike network through the downtown. And just briefly, historically for that pedestrian bike network, we've been focusing on the east-west link from the west-side parks through the downtown under the railroad viaduct at the creek and coming through the hitching post and on to the east-side parks and the high school. But with the new county park opening at the end of South Main Street, Anderson County Park, which is moving forward, it's the green rectangle at the very bottom of our comprehensive plan map, we feel as long as we're in the downtown, getting that connection to the south provides not only a great opportunity for village residents to experience that park, but it provides a high incentive for the county to help fund those kinds of connections through their park grant. And so this would be an ideal opportunity to quickly explore that issue. It's not complicated, but we need to pick a route. We want to conclude that first phase with an open house listening session, working with the public and work on your own worksheets to confirm those priorities and ask for ideas. It's amazing, particularly in a smaller community, how many ideas can come from the public just because they see things from a different perspectives and may recognize an opportunity or a synergy, you know, that as outsiders, we maybe never would think of and maybe wouldn't emerge from this kind of a study. And that would be a way to get the public involved right at the outset. On the top of the second page, a space needs analysis done by Epstein Hewin, prioritizing the analysis of the library and the senior center. There would be interviews with the facility directors and key staff, again, for their kind of insiders, insights. We would look at those facilities in relation to one another and all of the other facilities we're looking at to explore potential synergies between facilities, not only static, you know, during maybe 2020, but in terms of the emerging needs of the village and the growth of the village. We've been growing at about 3,000 persons a decade here now for 25 years. The county's been growing at 60,000 persons a decade for 35 years. I did a little analysis. We are the steadiest-growing county in the whole country. And that probably pertains to our, you know, kind of rely upon forms of federal, state, and county employment here. Anyway, that's a rare benefit to have such steady growth and, you know, from a planning standpoint anyway, be able to couch on that. I've always thought that if we had warmer weather, we'd be like Austin. We'd have a million and a half people and it'd be a mess. I'm helping them on their zoning code and it's a mess, you know. It's downtown, it's an exciting community, but otherwise, I don't think the quality of life's very high there. I trust we're not on Texas Public Television here, so.
I'll tell Rick Perry.
And the idea here would be to also evaluate those existing facilities as potential expansions versus new sites in the downtown area. And as a result, we would focus the space needs analysis on what I would call programmatic needs, not on building design. It's too early to design any buildings. So you tend to see diagrams that have boxes about, you know, what the library does and what the senior center do. It's kind of like a flow chart and they might interconnect with one another along certain lines. I'm tiptoeing into architecture here. I'm not going to go any farther. And then we would do site analysis, having a good idea of the space requirements for those facilities in the future. We'd have a much better idea of where they'd fit. And we feel on village staff and with Mark and Mike here, if I'm straying, I want to correct you to slap me down. But I think we recognize that this is an ideal time to look at some of the potential redevelopment sites that may be low-hanging fruit and include them in the consideration of this analysis because otherwise, we're pressed for space. And we've identified several locations with a handful of key property owners that would be simple to, you know, complete interviews in less than a day and find out where they stand in terms of their interest in holding on to the property and/or participating in redevelopment. And thereby, we can begin to narrow the range of alternatives. And I'm going to walk to the map here and just point those areas out. So this is our 15-year-old downtown plan and a bunch of it's happened because of you all. And it's pretty exciting because we've been headed in the right direction for a long time through village leadership onboard. We have the four houses and the auto use on the south side of Jefferson Street, right? With the exception of one of the houses, it's blighted, you know, officially being the state definitions of blight. And that's a big hunk of property and right now, it's under one ownership. And we have a, I was going to call it once in a generation and then I thought about it, it's once in, like, two lifetimes opportunity on that piece of property. Something ought to happen there rather than have it get split up into a bunch of odors and nothing would happen. So that's a significant property. We have the little building on South Main Street that is vacant right now in front of the clinic and everywhere else, clinics are expanding. They're putting on building additions or adding a second building as kind of a campus to, you know, drive dominance in the market. And so there's an opportunity all over the place on that block. And we know public parking is in short supply in that area. We have the gas station site across the street from the red brick. And there's a creek running through the middle of that property. It's just underground. It's running between the building and the pumps. It's not an ideal situation from a water quality standpoint or a building operations standpoint. And, you know, frankly, it's not a downtown building, you know, on that site. And they're redoing properties all over Dane County. I think I've reviewed four quick trips in the last two years. And, you know, that property might be in play. We have a bank. It's a suburban bank with lots of unused property. And when was the last time you guys used to bank drive-through? It's been a long time and I'm taking pictures of my checks and, you know, depositing by email. And so, you know, I'm not sure what their situation is, but they ought to be talked to because it's a big piece of property. It's adjacent to the creek. They have frontage on Jefferson Street. Brian Munson thinks that old bike factory building ought to be a group pub. He's, you know, about to open one himself there. So there's just some properties that need some looking at. And, you know, we talked the same way about the red brick 15 years ago. It was just this kind of brainstorming, you know, look what's happened there. So we need to keep these potentials in mind. We have the village hall site and then the sites across the street. You know, what's the future of the post office? We own that. The village owns that building. I'm not sure if you're all aware of that. And their lease expires in a couple years.
Twenty seventeen.
And as I stated the last time I visited with you, we have almost this perfect combination of, you know, downtown village uses in the downtown. And we can keep it that way, but we need a day's worth of interviews to see what the true potentials are in the downtown. So I'll go on to the next page. And that would be done by Scott Harrington, who's one of our redevelopment consultants. So the top of page three, we would then go into identifying the alternatives, what are the best possibilities. We'd explore potential for reuse and expansion, co-location and evolution. What might be a co-location five years from now? In 50 years, might be all one of those facilities or the other. Potentials for public-private partnerships, you know, potentially involving these sites under private ownership that I just talked about, and a recommended sequence of development. And we would bring those recommendations, of course, back to you. And in fact, after every one of these slides, we'd come and check in with you and give you a progress report. And then finally, we would work on the master plan itself. There'd be a graphic. It would be an update of this with some zoom-ins where we anticipate activity. There'd be a short amount of text to go with that. We would have an open house that would be a public display, again, with comment sheets asking the public for their review and analysis and suggestions. And then we bring the results of that back to you. You'd give us directions and we finalize the plan, graphic and the text. And then we would work with you on implementation strategies. And again, we would go back to Epstein Hewin and look at cost estimates. And Scott would run funding analyses. We'd come up with a project timetable and then we would bring that first to the plan commission because by state law, the plan commission has to make recommendations about any land the village owns or any land the village is thinking of acquiring and any public facilities. And then we would hold a public hearing either at the commission or at the board and bring it for board review and approval. And we think we can accomplish that by the end of the year. You know, I'm thinking second week in December at the latest. We know the last couple of weeks, not much happens. And just to wrap up, you know, I was looking at what's been accomplished in the last 15 years and everything there is checked off. You've done a public works facility and the public safety facility, the downtown park and intersection area, the pedestrian facilities in the downtown, the fire station expansion, the red brick redevelopment. And, you know, I see this maybe since I've been involved with a lot of these things as you have, as a continuation, not a second, you know, different set of priorities. It's amazing to me how much of this is still relevant. We really are just talking about tweaking details, not redoing this. And I think it's because it had good ideas to begin with, you know, that are reasonable ideas. They're implementable ideas. And we're waiting on a cost estimate from Epstein Hewin. And then we'll bring you an overall cost estimate for the whole project. And I'll bring that back to you as soon as we were able to get it together. It took a little bit of time to get the architects on board. Are there questions?
Yes, some questions.
On page one, going back to project prioritization, how would those decisions be made to confirm components within the plan?
By the board. Again, as we're wrapping up this first slide, I'll come back to you for a report. I think you would benefit by having some public input before then to get the reaction. And that's the reason for the open house. And I heard you're going on a tour of the Goodman Center. Wow. It's amazing what goes on over there. And, you know, it's kind of a rougher neighborhood, too. You know, it's, it was all built out. It was an industrial site. It's near the train tracks. There was contamination. And, you know, it was not the center of Madison. And it's amazing what they've accomplished. It's an inspirational thing to go over there and see what's going on.
Other questions? A comment I have. This is really exciting. It's really looking forward and it's interesting that what was done 15 years ago is in process and now we're updating and looking at where to proceed and would leave a significant mark on the community.
Yeah, I completely agree. It's very exciting. And I think, you know, in part because we're in Dane County and we enjoy a healthy, steady economy in a great community with a more or less intact downtown. I mean, we've never worked in a community that has a downtown that's so great and where the demographics and economics are so steady. So we ought to be able to accomplish these things just like, you know, you've accomplished things over the last 15 years. It's an exciting project.
Yeah. I was at church yesterday afternoon for a couple of interviews. I was on interview panel and one of the candidates came from Partyville and she got here early to come downtown. And the first, she said, what a nice downtown. So it's not very big, but that's really a nice downtown. I think that's a perspective people have. We have a chance to make it even better. So, exciting. Other trustees, comments, Jerry?
Yes, Mike, as I understand your overview, then, the next step would be an open house?
Our next step would be to get you a budget.
Oh, okay.
And bring it back to you. And it might, you know, as a result of the budget, you might want to tweak some of these things, but very quickly.
When you say a budget, Mike, a budget for?
Cost projections for both the architects and for us to perform all of these tasks.
How much we have to spend to make this happen, the plan?
Just to do the planning process, right?
Yeah.
This is just for planning.
Anything else from staff?
No.
Anything else from trustees?
I think it's a good plan.
Yeah.
I got one question.
Go ahead, Eric.
With Susan and Allison, does this look like it's going to be, going to fit with what you're thinking?
No, I think it's very exciting and I'm so happy about the public input. I think that's really so important that we're doing what the citizens want us to do and what the village board would. I think it's very exciting.
Good, good.
I agree.
Good.
Either one thing, Mike, when we update that plan, we should probably get rid of the roundabout.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Mark can always comment on that. Remember that whole roundabout thing we went through? We'll get rid of that.
That was Mark's idea, right?
That was Mark's idea.
That was going to be the Beal Roundabout.
He actually has a sign made up in his office that says Beal Roundabout. I saw it the other day.
You gotta put Mark's name on something.
Oh, we'll find something.
We'll get to that.
Don't worry. It'll be a lot of places.
Oh, yeah. You'd be amazed at what a little whiteout.
That's what the listening session's for.
Anything else for Mr. Slavney? Well, again, thanks, Mike. We always appreciate your good work and appreciate what you've done here. And we'll look forward to hearing the next step.
I'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to item seven, approval of minutes. We have 2013, July 1, 2013, July 29, 2013, special joint meeting and November 25, 2013, special meeting. We'll take those all in one motion, please.
I move approval.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Saying none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. And then we have 2015 minutes, March 23, 2015, special meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. Item eight is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight. The amount of $48,365.41.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question on the Stafford Rosenbaum 7250 vendor, 7250. On the Growmore dispersment, is that project starting or?
We haven't gotten an update. We, Lisa and I were just talking. We have, so far, we spent about $5,000 on fees and.
Okay, so those are reimbursement fees.
Well, so we're, right, so those are the, you know, it's part of what we're going to give them as part of the TIF arrangement.
Okay. And then on the, a little bit further down on the method, is church property, is there something happening there?
For Stafford?
Yeah. Yeah.
There was somebody that was interested in the, in the property, so we were doing some work, but at this point, nothing's happening with it.
Okay, thank you.
It was a, I had Matt sit on a conference call with me, with an accountant from a company.
Okay.
So, it took some work, but...
And then the very second, the last one, 10995 to Foxborough Golf Club for the PD K-9 golf outing, is that just a reimbursement? Is that, that used to be, the way every other cost for the K-9 program has been handled is...
Yes, maybe Lisa can...
The K-9 program supports it, but we pay it, and then the K-9...
It's, I think it has to do with the golf outing.
Right.
Further back in your packet.
Okay, let me, let me get to my real question. Is that a cost to the taxpayers, or is that being paid for by the K-9 program?
It comes out of the K-9 program.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
They actually, the outing made a profit, if I can use that term.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion second to approve vouchers in the amount of $48,365.41. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bret Howard?
Yes.
Statens?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item nine is community input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to item 10, proclamations and announcements. Board comments?
I have a couple of comments I'd like to share. Number one, the funding for the Highway MM project was approved by the county board last Thursday night, and it's anticipated to get done this road construction season.
Great, good job.
Yeah, so that'll be nice. And Pittsburgh did, was a player in that, they paid their portion of that.
Yeah, good.
And the other thing is, I don't know if everyone reads the morning State Journal, but I'd urge you to look at the article about our own Arlen Kai.
Yeah.
Very good article.
In fact, you said downtown.
Yeah.
Of course, with the Welcome Center, too.
But I just urge everyone here, the public, to look at that.
Yeah.
It's pretty interesting, I found a lot, found out a lot about Arlen I didn't even know.
Yeah. And he's been involved in initial downtown redevelopment, right?
Oh, gosh, yes.
Absolutely.
Non-HPC for a long time.
Right, so, yeah.
Now the chair.
I congratulate Arlen on a great career.
Yeah. Any other board comments? Go to staff comments, anyone over here? It's pretty quiet. Item 11, communication miscellaneous business. I'd made a discussion of possible action regarding fiduciary's request to delay installing Bergamot Townhomes Phase II private street binder course until later in the year. Do you want to comment on this, Mark, please?
They have requested that the, that the building come to support them out there. Typically, we don't do that, although this is just a outlet or a private street. I didn't feel comfortable doing that without the board's okay.
You're okay with it?
I support it, yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on that item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, discussion impossible action regarding adding the rental of the Welcome Center to the village forum on rental fees, and charging $25 per day for rental, for profit rentals.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
It's pretty self-explanatory, I think. We're just gonna put that on our fee schedule.
Mm-hmm. There's been answers, Judy?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Yes, somebody wants to, somebody wants to actually rent it for a book signing, which is what brought to our attention.
Okay.
And so, so what I'm saying here is that if it's for a profit, we'll charge it, but because we had so many communityizations that helped refurbish it, you know, if the Boy Scouts wanted it, for example, we'll rent it, we're not gonna charge them.
Right, okay. Anything over here? So we have a motion second to add rental of the Welcome Center to the village forum, and charge $25 per day for profit rentals. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, discussion impossible action regarding approving purchase of a GPS system from Siler Geospatial Division, in the amount of $8,185. Now, there's a note that 40% of purchase is charged to water, 40% to sewer, and 20% to storm sewers, so, Mark, this sounds like you again for an explanation.
I tried to go out and, or the staff, tried to go out and get a couple of different proposals. This is the only unit that would be compatible with the computer program that we're using. Or if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the CMOM report, Lee and I reported that needs to be done. This is part of that, collecting that information in the field.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
I assume this is budgeted, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, discussion impossible action reducing speed limit to 35 miles per hour between Bergamot Boulevard and Ash Street on Highway CC. Chief Burke?
It's just a recommendation that I was, had been looking into for some time. I think the, having the speed limit go from 45 to 25 at Ash Street is, is difficult. I don't think it's entirely safe. That area out there is being developed more and more, we're gonna have more homes. We have the pedestrian crossing at Alpine Parkway. I just think it makes sense to step down that speed limit for people coming, coming into town, and makes it safer for, for all involved. The county did a, a speed study for us, which was required in advance of making any reduction in the speed limit, and, and the results of that survey support this, this action. So, my recommendation is that we, we would, we would start out certainly with a, you know, an educational effort, not trying to get people acquainted with the fact that the, that the speed limit would be reduced. We would probably do that for a period of 30 days, just warning people and making them aware of the fact that the speed limit is changing. I think by doing it now, the hope is that by the time we get into the school year, you know, first, first of September, that people would be not only aware, but would be acclimated to the, to the change in the speed. We'll have the radar speed sign should be going up hopefully by the end of this week, where the speed limit turns 25 just, just west of Ash Street. So that would be another enhancement to that whole process of people using CC out there from Bergamot Drive in.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Did we get the pedestrian crossing signs yet?
No.
Have we ordered those?
That evidently is, is a much more involved process.
Okay.
For a whole host of reasons that, that I wasn't aware of. So, no, that hasn't been done. That, that could take another year to get those.
Really?
Yeah.
Anything else, Judy?
So this, so the 35 mile an hour would start at Bergamot Boulevard?
Yes.
Is that where that crosswalk is, like by the church, right there, or where is the...
No.
Out by Montague and...
Yeah, it's out further.
Wait, you know where they're, they're building the new apartments?
Mm-hmm.
That's Bergamot Boulevard.
Okay. So that would, so that's past the...
Correct.
Because I've just had people comment to me that they think it needs to be slower, where that giant crosswalk is, where that church is.
I agree.
So this would accommodate that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, anything else? So we have, we have a motion second, right? Or no?
No.
Okay. We need a motion?
I'd make a motion as presented.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion second to reduce the speed limit to 35 between Bergamot Boulevard and Ash Street on Highway CC. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item E, discussion impossible action authorizing the village president to sign a grant agreement for the bike trail. The village is receiving a $45,000 grant from DNR's Recreational Trails Act program. So we need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation here, Mike?
They surprised us. It, we didn't get, we were necessarily any money, then, then we, then we were told we were gonna get 12 files, and then I got a call we're getting 45, so...
Yeah, I read this, though, where'd this come from?
It's, it's coming from, this, this is federal money, I believe.
Yeah.
And so, a little surprising, and, and the next item is that there's even, I guess, still some more money that we could apply for.
Okay.
And, and I, I put the spreadsheet in the packet that Lisa and I work off of, and...
Yeah.
I was trying to just show you by circling that by inserting the DNR grant money, we reduce the applying of the ATC money by $45,000.
Yeah.
So that's $45,000 less that we, at this point, we have to transfer into the bike trail, which is good for the general fund.
Yeah, good.
So if for some reason we, we get any more money, the thing will be is try to not to use any ATC money.
Yeah, yeah. Good. So any questions or comments?
Is that still on schedule for being completed this year?
Yes, July 17th.
And that includes the asphalt?
Correct.
Pardon?
Correct.
Yeah, that's everything done, two fish hatchery.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Okay, so we have motion second to accept, authorize me to sign the grant with DNR for the Recreational Trails Act, $45,000. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, discussion impossible action authorizing staff to apply for an additional Recreational Trails Act grant for the bike trail.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So it's just more of the same and hope for the best.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I could have done this, but I think it's, I think it's good that the board is...
Yeah, it's good for people to see we're doing it, too.
Is there a dollar amount attached to that?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, discussion impossible action regarding authorizing staff to process change order number two for the bike trail for geotextile fabric for wet areas of the trail.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I think at some point, right, Mark, we'll have to actually bring the official...
Correct.
...change order back, but I had to put this, or we had to put this on the agenda because we anticipate the contractor possibly working on this...
This week.
This week, and sometimes, Mark, we'll do a fill change order, but we thought it made sense to at least give the board the, we, we think at the end of the day, we actually may save money.
Yeah, I saw the, right, so there were net savings when this all done, so...
Right, yeah. What's the dollar amount attached to that, again?
It's, it's, it's about $6,400, Jerry. But then, hopefully, we save that money by less excavating.
Right.
Yeah, said less excavating, less space, and so on, so...
That's a fabric used on the hills, it's been erosion, right?
It's...
No, it's actually a fabric that keeps the mud, for a better term, from pumping up from below, up through the rock and into the surface.
Okay.
It seals off the bottom of the trail.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's two sites, right, Mark, that?
Yes. One down on the Harris property, and then down in Fish and Wildlife in the woods there, there's the spot.
Okay. Anything else on this item? So we have a motion second to authorize staff to process change order number two for the bike trail for geotextile fabric for the wet areas of trail. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm gonna skip H. H's latest on Dane Con.
This is short. Sorry, look at, look at the agenda item is, basically, I, I hope that I went to my last Dane Con meeting, right, Dale?
Yeah, right.
And, the last one I went to, that it seems...
It's just not gonna go anymore, huh?
No, the, the system's moving ahead, and it's interesting, there's actually, there's actually a pretty good article in the, in the Isthmus last week, that even some of the towns that were objecting to paying the maintenance are, are paying it now. And, but at the end of the day, the municipal attorney said, "No need for a new contract." County, you know, you know, Joe Parisi went ahead and borrowed the money, they're putting the towers up, the system's moving ahead. So hopefully, by the end of 2016, the system will be in place. So, that's the latest.
Great, thanks. Any questions? And we'll give David a call tomorrow.
Yeah, I always think of you, I know. Trusty Donovan.
Item I, from June 1st, board meeting, village has a wastewater treatment plant sledge hauled every six months. Has been a question one of us.
That, that was for trustee Bollig. He was interested in our sludge.
Where do we haul it to?
We've got different farmers around the area that take it, we field inject it.
Item J, status of Highway MM paving by Dane County. Mr. Bollig did this one already.
I did that already, and again, that should be accomplished this road construction season.
Yeah, that's great.
And I, by the way, that's on the north and the south edges of the three roundabouts.
Yeah, that's great. And I can tell you, Jerry has put in a lot of time working on this, and talked to a lot of people, and pushed where necessary to get this done, so...
Been a three-year process.
We owe him a big debt of gratitude on this, so...
Well, wait till it's done.
Then we'll say thanks.
It's gonna be now.
We could call it the Bollig connection.
Yeah, the Beal.
Bollig Boulevard out there. Okay. Item K, building inspector provided notice of resignation. His last day of employment is June 16th, and village staff will have a proposal from an inspection company at the June 15th board meeting for the board's consideration.
There's really essentially two, two firms, so Mark is setting up interviews this week, and we'll have a proposal for the board next week Monday.
I got a question on that.
Yep.
I've heard from a couple of contractors that they would like to know upfront, and maybe this is something you can ask in your interviews, if one of these firms comes in and says, you know, "You gotta stop work because red tag this particular item," when they have to come back to do a second inspection, they want to know what the fee is going to be for that, because currently, we're not charging a fee, but they have heard these inspection companies sometimes double and triple the fees for re-inspections.
Okay.
And they would like to know that before there's any surprises.
And they typically do, I've heard that in the past.
Right.
We have been generous by not doing that. We, we could have all along.
But it doesn't sound like, from what they tell me, other communities do that, so...
I guess I've heard differently.
Okay, well, I can only believe what you hear. I've never experienced that myself.
That's a surprise they'd say that.
I just, you know, if you could just ask that question...
Sure, yep.
And then maybe report back to us when you recommend which one you want to go with, just so we know, so they know.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Yep, good question.
Any other comments on this? Item L, announcement of the bike Dane meeting, June 18th. The county holds these two or three times a year. It's Thursday, June 18th, from 1:30 to 3 o'clock. I've attended them all in the past. I am not able to attend this one, so if anyone can, I would encourage you to go. It's at the Lucio Center, it's a nice place, it's a good meeting, a lot of updates, and you could comment on our bike trail, and they're quite excited about the completion of that. So if you, if you can make that, let me know, please.[1659.12] Item M, discussion of possible ask regarding resolution number fifteen dash fifteen, amending the 2015 fee schedule. This is the Second Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Any big changes on this, Mark?
No, Candy caught all this. She wanted to make sure that the fee schedule was consistent with the liquor license order. The next item is just the thing that the board just approved for the Walkham Center, and then the rest is just some building permit fees that we have in the, that we're charging, but it's not on the fee schedule, so we need to show them on here.
Okay. Anything else on this? So, we have motion second to approve resolution number fifteen dash fifteen, amending 2015 fee schedule. This is the second time this has been amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, Pats for Pause, Police Department fundraiser. This is an FYI. Looks like their profit was about forty-five hundred dollars, about twelve hundred more than the previous year, so good for them. Any comments on this, Dale, or just...
Well, considering the fact that, if you all recall, that Saturday was cold, rainy, windy, and the fact that we, everybody that had signed up came and played, that was, we thought that was pretty remarkable. And actually, I think we even had a couple who hadn't previously signed up that showed up and played as well. So, we were very, very pleased with the response we got.
Good. Nice to see that kind of support. Okay, item O, review of possible action regarding the draft 2015-2020 capital improvement plan. Number one, park projects. Note one, more discussed about the tennis courts at the June fifteenth board meeting, and that ties into the pickleball courts.
Because of the motion, it came out of Park Board, yeah.
And note two, from the four-one-fifteen Park Board meeting, the Park Board recommended to amend the draft 2015-2020 capital improvement plan by reallocating funds for building a restroom at Bethel Green Acre Park to Keller Alpine Metal Park. Keller Alpine Metals Parks will be a community park, and we'll have a higher volume of patrons, so... Any discussion to go there? Any comments there?
Yeah, there was further action by the Parks Board last week regarding the Oak Street tennis courts. There is going to be a recommendation to the board to do the repair and maintenance Yep. rather than the capital improvement plan funds, which I think are for rebuilding.
Yep, as Steve just mentioned, that, and so this actually shows the courts being rebuilt for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars next year. And then what's gonna come from the Park Board is finding, moneying out operations for, I think it's like twenty-three thousand dollars. And I think they said it would last about three years. So, that'll be, it'll come as a motion from Park Board next week, and then the board will have to decide what to do. I think that if, I think that if the board is committed to rebuilding the courts, you know, borrowing the money, then I'm not sure it makes sense to, you know, spend money this year. So, but we can talk about that in more detail next week.
Okay.
And then I guess the rest of these are, I thought it was a good change by moving, building the restrooms, you know, to Keller Alpine Metals Parks, since we're starting to work on planning that, the bike trail. And the park fund has general field development, and then there's the, part of the bike trail system that Mike was talking about is the bike trail to the west, through Westside Park, through DiMaggio, down to Dega Park. The village had bought the property from DiMaggio family, and now we have, so that's part of this. And then the last one under the parks was the development of the Westside Park. We're doing a joint planning effort with the school district. And the other thing that'll be coming out of the Park Board meeting was the recommendation to hire a planning firm to start planning the Westside Park. Now, that also will be on Monday's agenda.
Okay, good. Any questions on this? Anyone? Comments? Okay, item two, economic development projects.
So, the first one ties in well with what Mike was talking about also. It really does, because, you know, this is sort of a placeholder for next year for, you know, acquisition of property for downtown redevelopment. And then the second part of economic development is that I put money in there to start planning for the expansion of the business park in 2019.
Okay. Any questions on this? Item three, police department building and equipment review.
I do want to say one thing. Actually, when I received this from Dale, I actually sent him an email to make sure that I appreciated what he submitted and how realistic it was.
Yeah.
And also the thing, the staff, I could tell the staff had a lot of input into it, so I thought it was really well done.
We're kinda getting used to that, aren't we?
And I think the squad rotation is good in it, and
Yeah.
the equipment, you know, we're looking at replacing, makes sense. And I just, I really, I really had no issues with it at all when I went through it.
Yeah, great. So, any questions on that? Anyone? Item twelve, reported committees. We have none listed tonight.
Steve, I think the board was actually just, you know, saying that the...
That's right.
So, you could just vote on one, two, and three, and then next Monday, we're bringing the entire team back for adoption, if it's okay with the board.
So, we're voting, again, not to approve these items, but to approve leaving them in at this time like we don't with the others that have come before. So, we would need a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And that's items one, two, and three, who are saying these are still in the game and moving forward. So, any questions or comments on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
So, again, we'll go to twelve then. There's nothing there. Thirteen, minutes not requiring action, there's none. Fourteen, unfinished business, there is none. Fifteen, new business. A, approve of pending operator licenses. These are approved by the police department. We have the Stop and Go, Robert Weiss. So, we need a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, approval of renewal operator licenses. Again, these are approved by the police department. Quick trip three-seventy-two, Mary Ann Rollins, Sean Marigan, Erica Bowen, and Peggy Packard, and quick trip seven-thirty-one, Marcy Rogers, and Christopher Giles.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's some future agenda items listed there that'll come our way. And then item seventeen is a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.